Hi, hello everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder Greg Kilwine and Julie from our team. Hi guys.
Hello, hello. Happy Thursday.
Yes, happy hot July Thursday here in this hemisphere. Y'all let us know where you're coming in from. We love hearing about all of our wonderful, beautiful people from all around the world who are using Get Oiling to grow young living. Today, we have a follow-up training to last week's training, which last week we focused on creating a lead magnet. And just to kind of brush up a little bit, and I do have some slides to go over to kind of cover this in greater detail. I also have a whole workbook for you to just go through all of this and a quick reference guide to get all your resource bundles and Canva things I made for you and just make it real easy for you. But real quick, if you have no idea what I'm talking about, welcome. You must be new, or you maybe missed us last week. So what we started doing last week was creating a lead magnet. Now, a lead magnet is literally just a thing that you're using to pay it forward and start creating conversations with people that are not explicitly about young living, right? Because young living conversations are really effective once someone is ready to learn about young living. And the majority of the time, in order for them to get to that place where they are interested in learning about young living, you must meet them where they are and help them solve a problem, be there for them, care for them, listen to them, or have tools like this that can open up those conversations. So if you make a pretty little PDF using the thing I've already made for you guys that helps them to get better sleep, now that conversation about the oil blend that you use, that maybe you posted about on Facebook that puts you to sleep like a baby every night when you put it in your diffuser, maybe she's going to be just a little bit more curious about that, just a little bit more open. And you could say, hey, here's a free thing. Anyway, it's a whole thing. We can go into funnel, psychology and philosophy all day. I nerd out on this stuff. I hope that you guys do a little bit too, or that you at least do this vicariously through me. So I'm going to get into some slides, you guys. We're going to, this is going to be a little, a little thick today. But you can get a copy of these slides. Once we're done, we'll send that out with the recording and we'll have them posted on our YouTube replay as well. And you're going to get a full PDF that walks you through this. So if at any point you're like, whoa, this is too much. Understand, you're going to be able to hit pause and then do what you need to do and rewind and hit pause and then have a guide to walk you through everything. So without further ado, we're going to get into some training and we're going to do, I believe we have a website review today. I believe we have one scheduled. And then we're going to chat a little bit as well about some really exciting things we have coming up. How many of you guys would really love to know how to utilize the MyYL bundles using your Get Oiling site? Something everybody's talking about right now, are really excited to be able to do this. Next week, we are blessed to have a member of our community who is actually really excited to come out and share how she's figured out how to do this, uses a couple of really popular tools along with her Get Oiling site to do this and to share these bundles. So really excited to be able to show these things to you guys. So make sure if you are not signed up yet, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession and get your team signed up. They're going to want to see how to do this as well. So let's go over to, by the way, if you're here and none of this is just like, I'm here because I need help today. Put your questions in the Q and A. We're here to help you even while I am sitting here running my mouth. All right. So let's, let's get into these slides and talk about creating our funnel. All right. Oh, I always do this, you guys, video. All right, Greg, if you get yours too, we'll have a nice little recording here. Thank you. One day I'm going to remember to do this. All right, so we can see my screen, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Greg. All right. So today we're going to talk about creating a funnel to get you more qualified leads for young living, more people who are ready to learn about how young living can change their life. All right. So here's what's happening today. First, we're going to do some training. We will have member website reviews and live Q and A and support. If you came here looking for help today, you're confused about something. You don't know where to get started. You're just trying to figure out what the heck's going on. Or maybe you're doing something advanced or whatever. It doesn't matter. No question's a bad question. We are here for you. Go ahead and put your questions in the Q and A if you got them. So we are here to help you. And again, get on the list, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. I'm looking at you watching the replay. And if you want a website review, you go to getoiling.com/websitereview and you can sign up for a dedicated live spot to get one-on-one help on an upcoming call. You want to look at your marketing strategy. You want to fix a thing that you can't quite get right on your custom website, whatever it might be, let us know. Go to website review at getoiling.com and you can sign up for one of these slots on a future weekly work session. Now, as I mentioned at the very beginning of this video, this is a follow-up to last week's training. You'll find this on our YouTube channel. It's called How to Create Lead Magnets to Grow Young Living, or that's what the thumbnail says. It will be the one that precedes this one when you look at our video list. So today's training, we're talking about how to create a campaign, which is a series of drip messages for your funnel that moves people toward a one-on-one call with you. We're then also going to create a landing page that offers your lead magnet. And then we're going to plug it all in and start sharing. Now, just so you guys know, I've already done this for you. The campaign is made, the landing page is made. All you need to do are some simple edits and I'm going to show you how to do that on our call here today. So to recap from last week, most people, vast majority, are not ready to learn about Seed to Seal, or Gary, or oils, or young living, anything at all, right away. Most people need time and they need exposure and they need to see that you aren't just in this to sell them something. So you can build trust and curiosity by offering freebies. And this is what a lead magnet is. That's what we made last week. And these are freebies that help them to get a result that they want. You're paying it forward. They don't need to give you a dime. They don't need to buy a thing from you. You're doing what you do because you care, right? I hope that's true for everyone who's here. I know that's true, actually. Everyone who's here right now watching this. You share young living because you cared deeply about the results it's gotten you and what you know is possible for others. Is that right? Give a show of hands, right? We are all on the same page where that's concerned, right? We're in this from a heart-centered place. And so how we project that to the world, because people aren't going to see the love connected to the oils, right? Like that's, people have to get in the company to experience the company. The path for them to get to the company and fall in love with young living is you. And the way that you get there is by showing them first that you're here for them, right? So what we do with our lead magnet is we offer something for free that gets them something that they want. And this can be incredibly simple. This is probably something that you already know and it's just like slap you in the forehead obvious. And you share these things with a funnel. Now you connect your funnel to your blog posts, your YouTube videos, social posts, link in bio on your Instagram or on your other social platforms, your, your signature in your emails, on your business card. You can put these things anywhere to start building trust with people. And this is what it looks like. You have a landing page, which is where someone lands, right? They click a link and they arrive at a page where they're offered something, your freebie. They enter their name and email. And sometimes their phone, you can choose to make that something that's optional or required. And then they are rerouted to a page that says, hey, great, you did it. Good job. What you asked for is on the way to you right now, but go ahead and add my email address to your contacts so that you don't miss anything from me, so that my email doesn't go to spam or junk or whatever, right? Then an email goes out right away that says, hey, here's the thing you asked for, right? And it also asks them to hit reply and say something to you, right? This, this email that sends out is the first of several emails in a campaign. And all a campaign is, just like a marketing campaign, is a series of messages that lead someone toward a purchase. An email campaign is a series of messages, in this case email, that will move them toward a conversion event. Now, what all that means, this fancy marketing language, a conversion event is a point at which someone could say yes and become your customer. And in young living, there's really only one way that that works in a duplicable sense, and that's a one-on-one conversation with you. So this email campaign, and I believe there's three of them, but you could add more, is simply going to share something that should be relevant and valuable to them because they were interested in your lead magnet. And then they're going to gently nudge them toward just hitting reply and engaging with you. Answering a question about something that's maybe related to the information that they asked for from you, right? So in this one, you know, three ways being crunchy, you can change your life. This is the one that I created for Martha Krejci's Go for Gold. I've created a separate, really cool one for you guys that you already have access to if you got it last week. You know, you could, in this case, the one that you guys are receiving, it is about sleep. So you know that this person downloaded a guide from you on three ways to get better sleep tonight. So you know this is, this person's struggling with sleep. You could send another personalized email to them and just initiate a conversation or just let the campaign do the work for you. And if they're ready to start speaking with you on a more personal level about improving their sleep, they're going to hit reply. And now you've got a perfect opportunity to communicate with someone about oils that you might recommend. They put in a diffuser next to their bed at night. Does that make sense? Right? It feels like this is a lot of steps. However, if you want to be able to get in front of more people more often, who are more ready than anyone else to get started, this is a great tool to have working passively in the background for you to help build trust and credibility and drip the fact that you're there for them onto people without you having to chase everyone around every day who could ever possibly be your young living customer, all right? So the lead magnet provides your leads with something of value that they want. It is a magnet, after all, for your ideal person. And the lead magnet we created last week looks like this. Or whether it was, it's made for you, you can change it to your liking. It's in Canva. The landing page is going to offer that lead magnet. It's going to grab their information, their email, their name. And then you'll be alerted from your Get Oiling system that you have a new lead. Here's a new person that you could reach out to. Your system's going to be doing the reaching out for you via campaign. But that's not going to stop you, right? You're going to reach out and say, hey, by the way, there's going to be some more emails coming to you. But you know, I just saw that you sent a message in. Tell me how I can help you. How are you doing, right? So use this as an opportunity to communicate. We're going to create a landing page that looks like this today. We'll scroll through it. It looks really cool. That offers our lead magnet. And the pop-up is a form here on the page. This is the landing page. They're going to enter their name and information. And then they'll start receiving the campaign after they enter their information on this page. Campaign's going to deliver the lead magnet. That's what they opted in for. It's going to encourage engagement with you and drip those additional emails that build curiosity toward next steps, toward that conversion event, which is a one-on-one call with you. So if you want a steady flow of people in your inbox saying, how can you help me? Right? That's a door open, wide open to learn about young living. Then we're going to get this done. All right. So let's talk about an order of operations. Now, we've already built the lead magnet. Of course, we can't invite someone to a party that isn't already planned, right? I mean, maybe you can, but if you want to have people really take something seriously, get a benefit, maybe a party's not the best analogy to use here. If we, if we want to invite someone to an event, we need to have the details outlined, right? So if we're inviting someone to look at information that might be relevant to them, we kind of need to know what that information is at the start. That's why we created our lead magnet first. From there, we create a campaign. Because what's the next most important thing? It's how we reach out to that person after they say, hey, I want this thing that you have. Now we want to know how we can connect them from getting that thing that we gave them to having a conversation with us. And then we need to build the thing that actually gives the details, tells them why they want the thing we made, which is our lead magnet. And then we've got a confirmation page, which is already done for you. You don't have to touch it if you don't want to. But there are some simple things you can do to change it around. Just quick, it's going to look like this. This is an animated little high five. It's going to show your email address and it's going to pop up your contact farm, form. Whenever they click get in touch, again, you don't have to touch this at all. It's already done for you. But you could certainly tweak it to your liking. When you download the resource bundle that includes, includes this page, you can find the edit settings for this under my site settings, custom pages. But again, it's really not much that needs to be changed here unless you just want to put your picture where this animated high five is happening. All right. So let's create our campaign. Again, using the template that's already done for you. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to plan this. We do not go straight to our Get Oiling site and just start writing emails willy-nilly if we have no idea what we want to say. Because unless you are a total tech whiz, and I'm not even that, I don't even do that. You want to write first before you show up. Write first, then edit and format, okay? So we're going to plan out what we know we want to say. I've got a resource that's going to help you plan this out correctly. We're going to write what we want to say fully in a word processor first, then we're going to design this. We do have, if you want to get a little fancy, I do have a Canva. I do have a Canva resource for you if you wanted to create like a little email header image or something like that to put on these emails. And then of course you create the campaign. You're going to be copying and pasting what you've already decided you're going to say. You format that, all that kind of good stuff. Now I have a campaign checklist for you that walks you through exactly what to do, including how you plan. Asking yourself these important questions. Why did they opt in to get the lead magnet, right? Why do they want the outcome that you're offering from it? What's the bigger problem that this fits into for them? What other questions might come to mind for them after getting your lead magnet? What would make them want to respond and start talking with you one-on-one? And how will you nurture that conversation toward a young living exposure? You answer these questions first because this is going to tell you what to say in your emails, right? It's so much more effective if we're going to be writing a campaign about a sleep lead magnet that we're not just saying, studies show that most Americans don't get enough sleep and here's why you need this and you need that. It's not specific to them. So if this is for moms, you know that your ideal person is a mom with young kids and those are the people that you want showing up. There you're going to say, hey, look, moms, I get it. Here's the struggle. You're trying to do this. You're trying to do that. You're trying to sneak in a nap for 15 minutes. Like you only get to sleep when the kid sleeps, or maybe you don't even get to do it then. And when you work in, say, the bigger problem or the why behind what it is that they've downloaded your resource for, then you can be even more effective in the emails that you send because now you can say, hit reply and let me know because I'm always looking for other mom secrets on how to sneak some sleep in during the day. What do you do, right? She's going to be much more likely to hit reply and say, okay, so here's a thing I figured out than if this was something that was just super, super general. Does that make sense? We want to make sure we're asking ourselves these questions first, all right? Then we're going to plan and write. And again, I have a resource for you, you guys, that already has verbiage spelled out that you can use to inspire what you say, right? So just tweak what I say to fit what you're talking about, fit the person you're speaking to. And then finally, you go through the steps of creating your campaign. All right. This is what that looks like. You have a campaign planner framework. And again, you guys, I have a downloadable booklet that has all of these pages that I'm showing you and all of the links to get your Canva templates and your Get Oiling resource bundle. And you're going to get that at the, basically when you get your replay today, if you're on here live, or it'll be in the re-recording description on YouTube. So I walk you through here in the campaign planner, what we need to say on the first day, immediately when it goes out. What we need to say when we send an email the next day. What we can do the next couple of days after that. And then finally, if they haven't reached out to us yet, we can send out what we call a spear email, which is short, specific, expecting a response, which is just basically saying in the headline, hey, are you looking, are you still looking for help with, you know, getting more sleep? And then just a quick, you know, like, hey, I hope you're doing well. I don't want to take up too much of your time. But if you're looking for help with this, I would love to have a conversation with you and see if there's a way that I can help you get this done. Hit reply. Let me know a good time that we could get together, right? All these emails are working toward that conversion event, getting them, getting people onto a one-on-one call with you. And again, you have a pre-made lead magnet that I gave you last week that is about three ways to improve your sleep tonight. And you can see the literal example of how this full funnel works. And I mean, heck, if you wanted to use it as is, you would just need to include the lead magnet in the campaign that's provided for you. And it's basically good to go. I would really recommend that you edit it though, right? Because we want to be effective in speaking to our right person. All right. So after you have written your copy in your campaign, you know, in your planner, you know what you're going to say in each email. Then you're going to download your resource bundle. And again, your, your resource bundle for Get Oiling is going to have a campaign that's already done. So when you go to your campaigns, you go find it. It's called Three Ways to Get Better Sleep Tonight. And you're going to edit it, change it to the name of your lead magnet that you're offering. And then we're going to move on and edit the emails in the campaign. And each one, again, it's already written here. You'll see how I wrote them in the planner outline. And then you can go in and use your own planner to swap out the text that's here, speaking straight to your person. You of course do want to link your lead magnet in your email, which you can do with the more rich and then insert or manage files links. You're going to do this throughout and I do specify in the framework where your lead magnet link goes. So you've got a full guide that walks you through every step of this. I'm just kind of giving you the overlay and the visuals here. The next step is to create our landing page and we follow the same process. We use the worksheet I've given you. You write it all out in a word processor, everything that you know you want to say. And then we design. I have a Canva template for you to use for this page and images that you can choose to use for section backgrounds. Those are something that you can pick on your own and I can show you how to do that here in a bit. And then you create the landing page. We've got a checklist for that as well. Questions you want to ask yourself so that you're really getting into the mind of the person you're speaking to. And then I've got a framework for you to follow where you can substitute my words for your own. You have an example to follow there. And then you follow the steps on this page to, on this checklist here, to get your landing page made. And again, going to walk you through a visual here in just a bit. This planner framework does cover the copy that is on the page and on the pop-up. Really simple. And the Canva resource bundles and everything are going to be there in your workbook. I'll show you what that looks like in a sec. After you've written your copy and created your image in Canva for your landing page, again, make sure your resource bundle is downloaded. You're going to find this in your custom pages under my site settings. The template is called Three Sleep Habits Landing Page. You're just going to look for sleep. You'll find it. And then we're going to edit what I've already done for you. Always edit your page settings first if you're using a template so that you've got the right title bar text, you've got a name that makes sense to you. And then make sure the link path, which is something they're going to see, the title bar text and link path are things they're going to see. Make sure those are edited to your liking as well. Now, the pop-up, that's going to be under lead capture settings. We've already worked through, if you are using the planner, exactly what to put in these two places. We're going to replace the image and the text here with your own. You also want to, because in the last step, we have edited our campaign and given it a new name. Make sure that yours is attached on this page correctly. Add the tags that you want, leads and newsletter, or leads newsletter, or something like this will be good for you so that you can keep your leads separate from your VO file import. This is an example. And then all the way down on this pop-up for page settings, you can change the button copy. So submit the button label. I think it, it already says yes, get me started, which in this case, our call to action is get the guide, right? Because I made a guide and this page really is telling them to get the guide, right? So we change the button label copy to make it congruent with our offer. And then finally, and you can leave this as is. It should show up like this for you because it's a part of the resource bundle. The confirmation page that's already done for you is connected right here. And so you just hit done and you save the page. From there, you do have the option to change out the background image on this section. We have a whole training on how to edit your background sections. That's this little half circle filled little diagram up here that the arrow is pointing to. You can swap that out. You can go straight over to Canva and grab a new image to use there. And then of course, because you're coming here to edit this page after having already written out what you know you want to say, you're just going to select all the text that's in this field and hit paste plain text to put in what you want to have here. We're almost done. Here, we're going to click the image to swap it out with the one you've created with the Canva template that reflects your lead magnet. And then we're offering what it is that we have in the lead magnet itself. So I actually copied some of the text from the lead magnet. And guys, if you have all these resources and you're paying attention, you will see where I've reused this stuff throughout here. So this is actually stuff that's on the front page of the lead magnet. Just copy it and paste this information here. The call to action is to get the guide. Again, just use the paste plain text from your planner. And then you could change the bottom section as well to keep, they have a parallax background, which I'll show it. So we save view and test it out and we're good to go. So now, now that I may have completely lost some of you guys, I'm going to actually show you what this looks like. And let me get into the account first and I'll show you there. And you guys, if there are any questions that we want to maybe read out while we're here, and I'm getting this set up, feel free. All right. So let me find the sleep one and I'm going to show you, I'm going to view it as a prospect would view it. And we're going to take a look at this. All right. So this is what I was just showing you. Look how, I love the scroll here. It looks like it's just floating over the page. Pretty cool, right? So this is the page that you're getting. And, and I've already kind of walked through how you're going to be able to edit it in our page editor. When they click get the guide, you're going to see the pop-up right here. They enter their name, email and phone here. And, and then they're going to go over to this confirmation page. Let me pull that up. If I spell it correctly. Can I do it? Confirmation. There it goes. All right. So this is the page. Super fun. This is what you're getting. There's a code here. So this is actually going to show your email address and not ours. So, so this is the page that they will see after they opt in. If for whatever reason, they can't find the email from you, they will be able to click this button and they'll be able to reach out to you directly. Now what happens next is they actually get, they start getting emails from you after they opt in here. And they get access to this PDF guide, right? So let me go and, and open up the full walkthrough of this for you guys so that you can, or the, the full workbook so that you can see what all you are getting and you'll be able to get this created. There we go. Okay. So this is our Get Oiling Funnel Workbook. So what you have in here are checklists and planners for your lead magnet, your campaign, your confirmation page and your landing page. You've got a resource bundle in Get Oiling that has the landing page that I just showed you, the confirmation page I just showed you, and the campaign that's pre-written that would, that is a framework for you to edit, to send out to your prospects. We also have the, we also have the Lead Magnet Canva Template itself, which you can go and edit in your own Canva account. And of course, in last week's training, we talked about how to save that to your Get Oiling account so that you can easily insert it into your email. And I'll show you how to do that here in just a second. So we're clear on how all of this stuff works. We also have a newsletter header. And this is something that again, all of these, the landing page image, the confirmation page gif, all of these things are pre-formatted size-wise for you to be able to plug into your Get Oiling system. So this newsletter header would look really nice at the very top of an email. It wouldn't be too big. And you can edit it and format it to your liking. So as we scroll through here, all of these things that I've gone over in our slides today are here, ready for you. The planning steps are going to be really important. Again, asking yourself the right questions. Then writing the things that you need to write. And then in all cases, I have pre-written examples for you to follow, right? So for a campaign and all of these things, you can actually see my examples and swap it out with your own text. All right. So this is all here for you. I do want to go over and show you a couple of things that can be maybe feel a little overwhelming or a little tricky. So I'm going to show you real quick what that looks like. First, let's make sure in our, in our campaigns that we can add, this is called sleep, that we can add our, our PDF correctly. So here's what you'll get, right? So here, here it is in campaigns. And I do specify, if I go over to our, to our campaign planner framework, I say for day zero, hi, here's your, and I'm calling it a guide, right? Here's your lead magnet. And then we're saying, you know, congratulations. Thank you. Go ahead and add my email to your email, your address book. And I give all of this specifically in the workbook. Like here's what I actually say. And you can use as much of it as you want, edit it out for your own, your own copy to your liking. But then here's your guide. What we're going to do here, and you have this connected already, this is the actual, this is the actual download, this three ways to get better sleep tonight. So it's already there. You will want to, if you've created a new one, what you'll want to do is unlink this, right? I'm going to go ahead and undo that right now because this is a template for you guys. But then you're going to, because last week you created your lead magnet and you've uploaded it. So it is already here under insert manage files. And we're just going to grab that right here. And now we have the link to it. I'm going to copy the link or you can go to the link editor and just change the name. To click here, change the text to click here. And now when you send this email out, when they click here, they're going to get your lead magnet. All right. Now you are going to repeat this. All of the emails that are included in this campaign do have a link to the lead magnet because we do want to make sure that they're actually getting it, that they're interacting with it, that we're reminding them of it and the value that it gave them. But that's that. And it's pretty simple and straightforward. Let me go over to the custom page real quick and just show you real quick on confirmation. Again, really, really simple. You can click here and replace this image with a picture of you, if you prefer. You can select, well, there's no, the text is actually in the image here. You could add more verbiage here to, you know, or add a, add a header up top to say you didn't follow the steps on this page to get the goods. Like you could put that up here if you want. You can change other You can change other things that you want, but you see this tag right here where it says my email. This means it's going to show your email address that you have set up with your good oiling account. So you don't even have to worry about that. This is already queued up to go. So you don't have to do anything to this unless you just really want to. I did include, by the way, in our workbook, a GIF. Template for Canva. So if you wanted to put a different gif here and you wanted something that was cutesy and animated like this, you could make one there. Just make sure that you export that file as a GIF. And then you upload that here. To your site when you're swapping out the image. And that's GIF is the file type when you're in Canva. So let's look real quick as well, just again, so that we can get the visuals and we're clear on this. Here's our page. If I already had my copy that I wanted to use in my planner right next to me, all I would need to do is select all of this text. So maybe my lead magnet isn't about sleep. It's about managing stress or something like that. Then I'm going to take the first bit of verbiage that I want to use on this landing page to get their attention. That's about stress. I'm going to copy it from my word processor where I've already written it. I've planned it all out. And then I'm going to go to more text, paste plain text, paste it right here, and it's going to keep this formatting. And size and the color and everything. And it's just going to get replaced with the words of your choosing. Now you can, of course, if you want to change the color of this, you just select it and you change it to a different color. If you want to change the background image here. I have this one here that's already on the page. You could go off to Canva. Guys, what I prefer to use in Canva is to go to blog banner. If I want to create a background image or a section background image, just go to blog banner, open up Canva and maybe I want. Maybe I want mountains or something as my background. And so I go to photos and I want this one. And I'm going to set the image as the background. I'm going to send it to get oiling. And I mean, I'm almost done. It's really simple. It's really just a matter of copying and pasting and doing a couple of tweaks. If you've done the planning ahead of time, it's actually quite simple. So good oiling is going to have this Canva image added. So I'm just going to click. There we go. Parallax background is selected. That's how we got that really cool scrolly effect. So I'm going to go ahead and show you what this looks like if I were to just swap out both of these things. And of course you swap this image here to like hit replace, do the paste plain text here, change the the verbiage. For your call to action on the button, all of that stuff you've done in your planner. But I want to swap this one out to be the same as the one on top. So it looks like I'm just scrolling over this image the whole time. It's really cool looking. So I'm going to hit done. I'm going to hit save. I'm going to hit view. Pretty cool. Right? So you can keep your page just like this if you want. If you would prefer to to not have the scrolly backgrounds, then all you would need to do is either delete it if you don't want it there. Or just remove this parallax background. I am going to change it back because the. The moon one is just so much nicer with the sleep theme. Simple as that. Done. Save. Good to go. Just so I can show you guys the site settings. That's really the last little complicated piece here. You want to change the name right here so that it's something that makes sense to you. So if your lead magnet is about stress management, then call this stress management lead magnet. But just make sure that what this title bar text is, is as close to the name of your lead magnet as possible. And then finally, give it, you know, give it a link path that makes sense. Right? So three ways to reduce stress. Or stress buster or something like that. Because that'll be your website address dot com forward slash whatever you put right here. Okay. And then under lead capture settings, again, this is stuff that you will have planned out. So you know what you're going to say when you get here. If you want to keep the formatting, then oops, command V or control V. If you ever mess something up like I just did. All right. So select the text and then paste plain text to add yours there. Swap your image out, just like you do on the page with the replace icon. Use your campaign that you have named. Add your tags that you want to use as tags. And then select whatever other settings that you'd like to have here or guys, if it feels complicated, just keep it as is because it's already set up. For the really the basics of what you need. And that's it. And the last thing that you want to do and do make sure that your confirmation page is selected here, hit done, hit save, hit view. And then opt yourself into this page. So that you can actually see what your future leads will experience. All right. I know this is a lot to go over, but. You have this video to watch as a replay. We will be using this content that we've put together here to revamp our get oiling dot com forward slash get leads. In the coming weeks, so you can have, this is more of like a broken down step by step, but it really is very simple, right? Creating something that you can put out there. That that leads the conversation toward young living is something that can be incredibly effective for you to have more of these conversations. That could be helping you grow your business. It sets you apart from everybody else who's out there in the world just. You know, posting about this month's monthly promo to people who aren't even buying product yet. Right? You could be the person who's showing up, talking about solutions. Who doesn't love that? And building trust with the people that you want to have these conversations with. So consider adding this step into your process of how you are. Getting the word out, getting in front of people and eventually sharing with young living. It is an investment of time, but once you have it in place, it sets you apart. It nurtures people on autopilot and it gets them curious without you ever having to feel pushy. Or them or any of us feeling awkward or weird. It just makes the conversation flow so much more naturally, so much more easily and more people will be curious because now they're like, oh. She's got a website and she's publishing stuff and oh, you made that you're pro. What do you do? Oh, let me tell you. Right? And now you have a conversation about young living. That's the magic here. So it's worth the investment. I'm excited to see what you guys come up with. Let's get into our Q and A. If you've put it in the chat. Excuse me, I might not see it. So please, if you have questions, make sure they're in the Q and A. And then we're gonna, after I answer a few of these questions, we're going to hop over. And do a website review because. I have Peg on here. Peg, you're here, right? We we raise your hand for me, Peg. If you're here. Yes. Hi. Okay. Excellent. I'm going to make sure that we come out and we talk about your site here in just a moment. So. Yeah, let's get over to our Q and A. All right, Allison, good questions always. I feel like the landing page should be before the campaign. Otherwise, how do you get them on the campaign? Okay, so. We're talking about an order of operations. When I say build the campaign first. I'm talking about your order of work, not their order of experience. The order of experience for your person is that they're going to be on your social profile, on your blog, on your YouTube video, on whatever. And they're going to see a link where you've offered, hey, I made a guide. It's three ways to help you get better sleep tonight. You know, the last one is a thing that puts me out like a baby every night. Here's the link. That's what they see first. The next thing that they see when they click that link is your landing page. On that landing page, they're going to be told what they'll get. When they opt in, which is your lead magnet, right? We're going to be talking about the benefits, like what will happen when they get this. And all of that kind of stuff, right? So they they see the landing page. After they put their name and their email in on that landing page, they start getting the campaign. The campaign delivers a lead magnet, right? What I'm talking about in those in the slides today is your order of operations. If we tried, think about it this way, if you were an architect. Or a home builder, right? You wouldn't, you wouldn't place windows before laying a foundation, right? Like you, you can't hang windows. There's no wall. So we have to work the way we do in a particular order to make things make more sense for the end experience. Right? Like you don't, you don't frost a cake before you bake it. Right? That's, that's kind of the gist that I'm getting at here is that we have to build in a certain way for this to work. It doesn't mean that that's the way that they experience it. I really hope that makes sense. Please ask more questions if you have them. Is there a way to not have the confirmation page download with every resource bundle since it's the same? Or do I just keep deleting it since it's taking up limited amount of space with my basic plan? That's a good question. I don't know which. So. This is a similar confirmation page to one that you may have if you're like and go for gold, for instance, like I've just recently redone this. Feel free to delete them where you're not using them, like by all means. You also importantly. When you are importing a resource bundle. You can check what you want to bring into your system and what you want to leave behind. You could always go back to your resource bundles. And re-download things if you change your mind in the future. So you can see the claimed resource bundles on your resources page on your resource bundle page. And then, and then, yeah, you don't, you don't have to keep everything that you ever download. Definitely not. All right. Should we add a disclosure in the pop up that they will be added to our newsletter? You certainly can. And I think that that's a good practice. And let me show, I'll actually show you guys real quick exactly where to do that. It's an excellent question, Allison. This is also where you might put like a quick disclosure and say something to the effect of like, you know. I never share my emails with anyone. This is only for you. I'll never spam you, promise, whatever. That's something that you would put right here, this email newsletter opt in label. So you put this in right here. And then when they opt in, they're going to see that message right down here. That is a really good practice to have for sure. And depending on how you run your business and you know, what kind of disclaimers and stuff you want to use, I just, I don't want to put those kind of words in your mouth, policy procedure legally stuff like. That is definitely something that you want to make sure that you do not totally required, but it is a good thing to have. It's not like a GDPR level kind of thing. You do need to have, like, if you're in Europe and stuff like that, like there are things you're going to want to have on the site. But that does not pertain to the individual landing pages. Let's see Peg. So you would email this out to current or potential customers. Yeah. So there's, there's, there's no harm in doing that. This is definitely something that is more geared toward getting potential customers as opposed to current customers. But if your customers that you already have are tagged in your system. As customers, then you know that when this new lead comes in, and actually here, let me show you a setting. On this page that you could use for that purpose. Because obviously you, you want to continue loving on your people, even you know, once they're your people. And if they would benefit from this guide, then there's no reason not to share it with them. I believe it's under advanced settings. Yeah, here we go. Notify for new contacts only. So if you are going to send this out to everyone, including your contacts that are already in your system as as your customers. Then only get that notification if they're new, because chances are the majority of people that are in your good oiling system right now are people from your VO. Right? And you want to love on them. You want to give them this stuff, but notify for new contacts or. Or if you don't want to get notifications and you just want this to be an autopilot thing, which I don't recommend because you know, you want leads for your business. You want to know when people are opting in. Just use notify for new contacts only. And this default, if you click change, this is also, this can be found under contacts, settings. General. So you can change your default as well because they'll always have the default unless you change it under advanced. It's a good question. Great questions today, you guys. All right, Mariness, could you go over the parallax settings? What they should be in order for it to work properly. I can't get it to work. My bottom image keeps disappearing. So we do have a full training on this and it is, it's, it can get a little in the weeds, but I will say this. Make sure that the image is big enough. And then also you want to make sure that you have enough padding or spacing, whether there's text on the image. Or on the background or there's an image on the background or whatever that might be. Let me show you really quick, you know, just basics here. You want to do this. And if you want it to basically have the effect that I was showing you, you do want to make sure that these sizes on either side of this thing in the middle. Are about the same. So I would actually copy the section. Once you've got it working the way you want it to. So you're not going to see the parallax setting while you're on the page here. You will have to save and view it. And I mean, even when I created this page, what like yesterday. I played around with it, the spacing until it looked like I wanted it to. And then I duplicated it and put it at the bottom of the page. Which you just do by hitting duplicate section and then moving it down. But this is where we set up the parallax. You hit this edit section backgrounds. You, you select parallax background here. You can choose where it starts out. On the image. So whether it's low or high, this is usually in the middle. So I actually adjusted this one low because I wanted the moon to show up. Right? Like I wanted it to look a particular way. You can adjust the vertical or horizontal background position of an image that's in your background. But then importantly, and this is not standard for one of these sections that I created, there's 90. Pixel padding on the top and bottom of the section, because I really do kind of want you to see like the moon and to like scroll. Over the moon with these two sections. And so, so that's how I have this one set up. And again, once I got it, like I tweaked it. And then I would go to done, I would hit save, I'd hit view. And then if I had already viewed it, I would just refresh it and see what changes happened. Right? So that's really it. You do want to make sure that you're using a big enough image if you're using and that you don't have, if this is too big. It might not scroll for you, right? If there's too much padding and the image isn't big enough, then you, there's not like enough space for the parallax effect to work. Greg, please like correct me if I'm not saying this right, because I'm worried about being, being right about how I'm saying this.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. Okay, good. So, so yeah, I hope, I hope that helps, Mariness. I would just, I play around with it. I don't really know much more about like what the resolution sizes and stuff like that would be. I just use blog banner. Like if I want to use something that's going to be in the background of. Of a section like this, even if it's a larger one like this. I'm always just going to go over here, go to here, type in blog banner and create something new in Canva. Because the blog banner is huge. It's a really big image. And it tends to stretch over pretty nicely over a background, but sometimes it's trial and error. I can tell you that I frequently, if I'm doing something like this. I might have to delete several photos because I've like made four different iterations on Canva and it doesn't quite look the way I want it to. But now that we have a Canva button, it's really easy to do, right? So. It gets easier with time. All right. So we've got that one and I'm sorry it keeps disappearing. Get it right in one section and just duplicate that section. That's what I do. If I get it right once, I'm like, all right. Replicate and I'll just swap out the image. I made like a whole page for a client's retreat recently. And and it's just got tons of these sections and it's the exact same parallax settings on each one. I just swapped the image like. That's an oak tree. That's a willow tree. We're just going to keep scrolling. There's a lighthouse and it's all the same. All right. Is it wise to have more than one freebie on our homepage? Or do you recommend just having one freebie? That ends on a landing page and then save the others for different areas of the website. Mariness is a great question. Above the fold. Very top section of your website is the very most important part of your entire site. Because that's like the make or break. First thing they see, they're going to decide whether they stick around, whether they're curious enough or whether they take action. Right? So you need to have something compelling there. And so what I would do is put the most compelling thing there. And then further down the page, right? Because if someone stuck around and made it pass like 50% of your page. They're, they're curious. They're wanting to look. And so you can provide other lead magnets and other offers. Of course, in that case, you would have to have them go off the page, right? Because you can only have one pop up. Lead magnet form on a single page. But yeah, you could certainly do that, right? If you want to offer, maybe they don't want your sleep guide, but they totally want like your blog newsletter. You're going to be sending the blog newsletters, people who get the sleep guide too, but whatever, right? Like they don't want that. Give them that option, right? They want to join your, your lead group. Give them that option. Yeah, absolutely. Just don't put it right next to it, right? Because if we give them too many options too soon, they're going to be like, oh, what do I do? And if you, if, if you say too much, they do nothing, right? Or if you give them too many options, they choose none of them. So real prominent, real big up top. Here's what I can do for you. Here's a step in that direction. Get my lead magnet. And then maybe a little about section or testimonials or something like that. And then further down the page, by all means, you can add other offers. Okay, how do we access the good oiling funnel workbook? No worries, Astraea. We're going to send that out via email. After our recording is processed today. And it will be available just to click and download on our YouTube, YouTube replay words. Later today, once that's done. Okay, Allison says, so creating a blog post about sleep for homeschool moms. I had a button for this landing page and funnel. Yes, 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 yes. So if you're creating a thing about sleep on your blog post, heck, put it like in the footer of all of your blog posts. Say, hey, mom. I hear you. I'm tired too, but you know what? I found a way to go to sleep like baby every night. You're going to really want the recipe I give you in number three. Here's the link. Go get it. Pop a button there or just hyperlink the text and then you send them off to the landing page. You got it, sis. You've got this. That's, I'm excited to see you do this. Good job. All right. I'm going to ask, answer one more question and then Peg, thank you for being patient. How can I set up automation that acts like a reminder? For instance, I have a custom page with a survey so they can opt in for a text or email reminder, but I can't figure out how to tag them and automatically have it sent out. So you can automatically apply a follow-up plan. With an automation. You can automatically apply a tag with an automation. So if you need a reminder for someone after they perform X activity, click X thing, open whatever. Then you can have, create a follow-up plan that on day zero or whenever says to. Or you could add them to a campaign if you're supposed to send them a text or an email reminder, right? So whatever the thing is that you want to be reminded to do. Or that you want to happen. If it happens in our system and it's related to a contact, you can use an automation for it. Right? So, so that's, that's basically it. So. You have a custom page with a survey. They're going to opt in. Okay, if you want them after they complete the survey to then get a text reminder and get tagged. Or something like that, a text reminder for something else, or I don't know. Then what you're going to do is maybe you embed the survey on the page, like if you use type form or something like that. And then put a button at the bottom that says, you know, hey, click this. and then put a button at the bottom that says, you know, hey, click this when you're done, you know, to go to whatever, right? And then have an automation there, right? But the only thing is you have to have sent them that page, like for that automation to work, like from your, from your email. It's a little bit more complicated, like I, obviously, I think if you were to chat with us a little more about the circumstances around how this automation should work, we could give you better insight. So feel free, if my, my answer sounded confusing to like shoot us an email or like just respond here if we've got time to cover it today. All right, without further ado, Peg, Peg, will you raise your hand for me, please? And I'm going to bring you out to chat. I'm very excited to chat with you today. Thank you. All right, Peg, you're gonna be rejoining as a panelist, I think, because of the version of Zoom you have. So hopefully that is happening here in just a moment. Perfect, yes. All right, once you're able to chat, please go ahead and unmute yourself, and let's talk. Tell me about what you are looking for in terms of help for your site, Peg. Doesn't look like we have audio for you. If you would like to, like just send a direct chat message here via Zoom, then you could certainly do that as well. Either in the Q and A directed to us or, or in the chat, Peg. Either way, I'm gonna go ahead and pull up your site here. And, and hopefully we'll be able to talk. Okay, I do have a link. Yeah, tell you what, Peg, if, I guess, let us know if you can hear. Here we go. I'm gonna try login again, see you, but don't hear it. Okay. So yeah, feel free, come right back and, and we'll bring you out. And we'll get started, and I'm gonna go ahead and get your page and everything loaded so that we can look at it together. It looks like you've been working with our friends at Simple Grace Collective. But we want to talk about how to help people find the website. So excellent, excellent. So we're gonna talk about your niche. We're gonna talk about all these great things as soon as we're able to talk. So, so yeah, I guess while we're here, Jamie, it's like while we're waiting for Peg to get the tech stuff sorted out. Jamie, if you're here, if you want to raise your hand, I'll bring you out to chat, and we can get some more clarity about the automation that we're talking about. Hi.
Hi. Thanks for bringing me on.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. So can you tell me a little bit more about what, what this sort of setup is so that we can give you some better instructions?
So I committed to doing a weekly Zoom class for my team. And then I sent them all out an email, letting them know this week, this is what we'll be talking about if you'd like to opt in for a reminder. Because a lot of times what happens is we get busy and we forget about it. I do it all the time. I forget, and I get upset that I missed the call, kind of like these Thursday things. The day just gets away. And so I created a custom page that has a survey on it where they would put their name and either their email or their phone number, depending on how they wanted to be notified. And, and then I tried to create a campaign and set it up as an automation. And I'm, I'm working on it. I'm problem solving and stuff, but I figured if you guys are here, it might be faster just to ask.
Sure, sure.
Because I couldn't.
Yeah, go ahead. These are weekly, weekly emails, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, and they're gonna go out. So this, this is going on every week in perpetuity.
Right, every Wednesday at 7:00 PM. So around, I guess it would be five central, because that's when you guys have this. I don't know if there's a way to override the time that the system sends out the campaign for the day.
Yeah, there is.
I don't know how to do that.
If you, so this is available at a premium and above. You can actually go to advanced settings and choose the time that you want it to send. You could also choose the date that you want it to send. So you could actually create a campaign that for the next year will notify everyone who's on that campaign. And it can be date specific. That's what I would recommend that you do with that, is to have a date specific email. Of course, if you find out that maybe on a particular week you're not meeting, you're going to want to change that out, like, but, but it's gonna be all in one place. And so what you can do is, is when people opt in, they're just opting into that. And that's what they're getting. And then, of course, if you wanted to use an automation, you know, they could click a link in email to do that. Maybe if they fill out a survey, you have an email that goes out to them after they fill it out. And then the, you know, click here to opt yourself into reminders. Maybe that's in the email.
In our system, I have the premium with you guys, and I, I believe that I can set this all up. And that it creates a, when they fill out that survey, it adds them to an automation that launches all of these things, correct? I have this program. I have not been using it. I want to make my life easier and do the due diligence and set it up so that the system works. And I can spend my time connecting with my people personally.
Right, right, perfect. Yeah, so we're excited to see you do that. And of course, if you have any issues with it, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. And, you know, we're available here or in the inbox.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, good luck. Talk soon.
Okay.
Take care. All right, Peg.
Hi there.
All right, so let's talk. I saw that you're, you're working with Simple Grace, which is great. You've got, it looks like you've got a site set up with them, or maybe a template of theirs. Let me see if I can find this real quick. Yeah, so tell me, tell me what you're looking for.
So I have the site set up, and I feel like, I don't know, I feel like it doesn't, I don't know if it says what I needed to say. In other words, is it just, does it look like it's just a stamp? And not personal? And then that, that pop-up pops up all the time. How do you get that to stop popping?
Sure, sure, sure. So we can look at the pop-up here in just a second. No, this, this looks beautiful. So the thing is, right, like you, you know that the Simple Grace girls have this template, right? And, and sure, there are a lot of people who are in Young Living who have Good Oiling, who have this template. It's a beautiful template. But you put your own spin on it, and also your person is not going to have seen any site like this before, right? Because your ideal person that you're gonna be sharing and living with isn't someone who's like aware of what other people's Young Living websites look like, right? So this is really beautifully done. I think this is great. I really like the images that you've chosen, and they just, they do such a nice job. No, this is beautiful. So the pop-up, let me, I'm gonna exit out of here so that I'm not like broadcasting all of your, your back office to everyone. But I can show you, that's a setting under page settings in your custom pages, which is where your, your page is. So let me find that real quick, and I'll show you how we fix that. There we go, custom pages. And then what do you call this one? Is it home or?
It's the Geo Home.
It's Geo Home? Okay, the template. All right, so this, if we go to settings, lead capture settings. All right, when someone tries to leave the page, this is exit intent. This is when the pop-up happens. So you can choose to omit that if you want to only have the invitation, you know, to, to push the button and get the guide. If you only want that to be at the top of the page, then you can just leave all of these unchecked. Another option, though, that you might consider is maybe after, so somebody sees it when they first arrive here, but maybe if they make it past 75% of the page, you know, before they decide to go do anything else, I'm gonna be like, hey, hey, remember I told you I had this thing? Right? So you know, after 60, 75% of the page, that way, it's really just after they've engaged for long enough, and you're like, hey, I've got this thing. Do you want it? That would be something I could recommend, or you could just not have it at all. It's completely up to you. In this way, the only way that they're going to get that guide is if they click whichever one of these you have set up for leads. Oh, this is actually going off to, what is this? I think this is a grow oil sip repeat. So you do want to make sure that on your Canva that you swap this image out, use their templates. I know the girls use templates for this. Use their template for some kind of like, you know, my favorite drink recipes or something like that. And then this one, I think, is the truth about candles one. And you have a separate landing page for this. Got you. So what if, let me look at this real quick. I've never actually dug into, all right, simple start. Oh, that's right. This is the simple start. This is it. Grab my free download, simple start to natural living. So it's not a button. So what I would do, since there isn't like a button here, and we're being kind of subtle about our offer right up here, I would definitely have like after maybe 75 or 60% of the page. Let's just do 60, we'll do 65 and call it a day. And this way, people will get the pop-up. And, but it won't be like, you know, it won't be quite so like in your face as something that's exit intent, right? Right? So if we're on your page, and obviously we could click this, or we could scroll, and there it is.
And there it is. Okay.
Yep, perfect. This is great. So what else?
So the other thing that I had, I was listening to the last week's call, and I think you had mentioned about not having too many lead magnets on your page. And then I was like, oh gosh, do I have too many, like I have that simple start, and then if you scroll down, I have those other ones. Is that, you know, like the coffee one and the candle one?
This is totally fine. No, this is, this is, this is fine. The, the idea here is, is to be really clear right up here up front. This is above the, above the fold. Most, and in the most ideal circumstance here, we're gonna say, hey, this is who I help, and here's how I can help you transform whatever it is that you need help with. Get my thing. Here, get my thing, right? And so you do have something here that satisfies this. And this is a more subtle way to say, here's who I help and how, which is, again, it's totally fine. You, you ought to remember, most people are not just going to stumble upon your homepage. They're going to arrive at your site from somewhere else. And there's going to be some kind of greater context. So by the time they're on this page, they're already a little curious about you. But, but we want to really grab their attention and say, hey, I got a thing. It's for you. You're gonna love this. Like it's for you. And that's been like the whole point of going through this campaign training that we've been doing for the last few weeks now. That campaign, the whole like funnel, like, you know, get your lead magnet, get all these things in place. Because the more you the expertise is, the more, you know, your ideal person, it's for the better. It's gonna work for you.
And when you say that most people aren't gonna stumble upon your website, they're gonna get here from another source. Where, how do you get them from the other source? What are those sources?
Yeah, so content, content, content. So if you're blogging, your blog posts on the Get Oiling platform, you're, they, they'll see, oh, well, who is this person? I'm gonna go to our homepage, right? Because maybe they saw your blog link was linked in a YouTube video that you did. Or you shared a blog post link to help someone out in a group that you're in on Facebook. Or you have a link in your bio on your Instagram to, well, maybe your homepage. But, but maybe even more likely a guide that you offer, but they're kind of curious about who you are before they give you your email address, right? That's, that's the thing, like your, your content is what leads them here. You know, because at the end of the day, people aren't like, nobody's going out on Google and just like, you know, saying, you know what? I'm gonna look up Peg.
Right.
Because Peg's gonna solve my problems. They're looking for, you know, answers to solve their problems. So if you're showing up with content, YouTube, blog posts, social, that's helping them solve those problems, then they're going to find their way to you contextually, because you have offered a lead magnet. You've made a blog post that maybe also has a lead magnet. So your content is ultimately the breadcrumb trail that leads them here.
Okay.
Yeah, and then also, I mean, just you being on social, right? Because you could put different links to your site, landing pages, things like this in your, in your bio, on your social media. You could say, you know, hey, I helped this person get, do we have this thing? I've got a guide, simple start to natural living. Click here to get it. And then you just use the landing page link, right, in your, in the link there. Because that's more effective than just sending them straight to a homepage, unless your homepage very prominently is like, get my thing, right? If it has that above the fold, then, you know, you could just have that as your link wherever. Because now they're not only gonna get the information about you, they're gonna know what they can get from you right away and become your lead.
Okay, okay.
This is beautiful. You're doing good work.
Thank you.
They're, they're making some content and sharing your magic with the world.
All right, thank you.
Yes, very much. You got some compliments on your, on your, your site here in the chat, beautiful pictures, and they are. It's very well done. All right, you guys, thank you for such great questions today. Is a very pretty website. She, Peg's doing great work. And you guys, you can find out that the template that she's using is from Simple Grace Collective. We love them to death. They create resources on our platform for our members to use. They've got free stuff. They actually gave away an opportunity page during convention. It's so good. So just look them up on our, our partners' page, because they're content partners for Get Oiling. All right, Surf and Yoda. Julie, we've been saying, um, yeah, so one day we'll talk about, about Julie's bat signal and, and like what Julie's all about and who Julie's for, but I think you have clues, Allison. Anyway, we appreciate you guys being here. We will be back next week where we will be featuring a member of our community who is using the MyYL bundles on the Get Oiling site. She's also integrating use of, what's it called again? The app. I keep forgetting the name.
Life steps.
Life steps, yeah. So you're gonna learn how you can utilize life steps in MyYL with Get Oiling to put bundles on your Oiling site, wherever you want them. We're gonna talk about what it means to be effective in this, because I think that a lot of us are like, oh, I can put bundles on my site. But it, you know, we, we do need to have a conversation about like what effective use of tools looks like, right? Because if we can be custom in how we're doing this. So anyway, it's a whole thing, soapbox. By the way, if you want to get on a soapbox about things that are effective in business, last training with Jackie McLaughlin today, here in 23 minutes, that's JackieMcLaughlin.com/Platinum. She's a platinum leader in Young Living, and we are doing training on things that work. And today we're talking about engagement and education ongoing. So be sure you're signed up for the work session next week, so you can learn how to use these tools with your Good Oiling site. Thanks for being here, you guys. We will see you next week.
Bye.